Meeting of the Village Cold Spring Planning Board. Any reports from members?
Nothing to report.
Okay, so Chair, the Chair, so 124 Main, the parking waivers came up in front of the Village Board on Tuesday evening. And what, and the Village Board, I happened to be here doing some paperwork and they called me in and they asked if that was the final step and if then the applicant could then proceed with the work. And the reason they were asking was they were concerned because the railing, the porch railing had been removed from the stoop. The stoop, as you know, he hadn't purchased it yet. And the certificate of appropriateness on file with the HDRB said there's no change to the stoop. Then obviously you can't make changes to property you don't own. So, so they were concerned about that. So I said, well, obviously you're, you know, if these things are done at your discretion, so I would just not take it up. You know, basically just resolve the issues with the applicant first. So today, the, the, the building inspector issued a violation. So they also sent a notice out to the applicant and the attorney to say, you know, your permit, you know, is being held up. One thing that we, you know, unfortunately he was given a demo permit, which is not great to do ahead of site plan. When we're doing site plan review and change of use, you know, it's great on the construction side is you can, you can kind of jump ahead and get your construct, get your demo done, but then if your change of use doesn't go through, what do you, there's, there's path back is very different, right? So the place is already demoed. He removed the porch railings, so he's gonna have to work with the Village Board and then hopefully the Village Board will then, you know, will resolve the issue and then approve the parking waivers. So I made, I made sure that the village clerk was aware that as of right now, there's no change of use, right? What he has is a restaurant, right? Because, you know, the change of use is predicated on the parking waivers, which is the way you, which is our only avenue for approving changes of use in the B1. And so if those parking waivers don't get, don't get approved by the Village Board, which are discretionary, but in this case, there's no reason they wouldn't be because it's what, it's what the legislative intent of those parking waivers was, was to, to allow an avenue to have B1's change of use with similar impacts, similar, you know, similar, similar size. It's not to allow for the expansion of. And then obviously, as we set precedent on Two Stone Street, they're not for the expansion of residential use because it was very clear that when you look at all the supporting documentation, when the mayor introduced the, the concept of the, of the, of the change to the local law, that it was about commercial applications on Main Street and having a way to figure out how to approve changes of use, which for existing, you know, for existing conditions and not expansion of conditions. So one, one unintended consequence that could have happened is they just start dividing, subdividing a bunch of apartments and buying, you know, buying parking waivers. That would be a real problem, yeah, because then it's, they're not short term. The intent was short term, short trip parking, right? You know, that you're, that you, that you have vacancy. That doesn't exist with, you know, so anyway, so the, that's where 124 is now and hopefully they'll get it all resolved. If I were the applicant, I'd, you know, make right with the Village Board as soon as possible.
The Village Board, to my knowledge, the Village Board did, had already, I don't know, a couple of months ago, voted to approve the sale, you know, or voted to...
As we know, he's been buying that stoop for nine, four years, five years, maybe more.
He was gonna, he was buying it in 2013.
Were you on the board at that time? Yeah.
Or 2014.
Yeah. I don't think I was at that time. So anyway, so it's, it's obviously taking a while, for whatever reason, but regardless, he doesn't own the property. There's some confusion about some notes on the certificate of appropriateness, one of the elevations shows a change, so they'll, they'll correct that document and get it back out to him. So I'm not, hopefully that'll all just get resolved. There's really a whole lot that I don't think will get pulled back into it, but in the event that they don't resolve it, then obviously there is no change of use. So they, they gotta get on their way.
Oh, I'm sure they're...
Yeah, I mean, it's not, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I, you know, I had expressed to the Village Board that the Planning Board that discussed with them, as had the HDRB, about accessibility, right? That, you know, you're opening a public hotel, it really should be accessible. It's a federal statute. That requires, I, I don't know if it requires owning the stoop. I don't know that not owning the stoop releases you from a federal statute. I don't, I find that hard to believe, but that's up to the code enforcement. But if he buys it, then obviously they can kind of clean that up. That would require a site amendment, but that's a pretty simple site amendment, basically just to show a ramp or whatever is needed to access the building. Yeah. But now, now because there's been a change of the historic fabric, it's gonna have to go back to HDRB to get the, to get... Yeah, well, because it, yeah.
Okay to know.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, people, you know, we're here, so I mean, people really need to come and make sure they avail themselves about what's approved, what's not approved. I'm not sure how, I'm not sure why you would remove the railing from a, you know, from a porch you don't own, when, when even the installation of that railing was a large process back in 2014. You know, my concern, it's funny, I said to the board, I said my, I was actually...
The same question actually came up, came to the Village Board at the time, in, in April. The building inspector had addressed the question of construction taking place on village property. And at that time, because the, because the Village Board, we wanted to support ongoing business and, and didn't, and wanted the improvements to be able to take place, we agreed that, we, we agreed to, 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 we agreed that the building inspector should allow him to continue on the condition that he was buying the stoop and he had...
Didn't follow through on...
Yeah, I mean, his...
He didn't follow through, we didn't enforce it.
Followed through, nobody followed up.
And we didn't enforce it, yeah, okay. So, no good deed.
No good deed. Don't we know about that?
So, that's just something, just for our own edification, that these, a lot of these porches are like that, a lot of these stoops, you know, right, the, you know, like the five feet or so from the sidewalk. So we should be mindful of that. And then also that our records, before we sign off on them, are, are absolutely accurate. There's a note on the HDRB plans that the railing is going to be changed on one of the elevations and unfortunately that didn't get struck, but...
Oh, so...
So it's part of the C of A, but I...
But they do that?
But I told the Village Board, I said, listen, I, I, any decision that a board makes on a property that an applicant doesn't own and doesn't have an owner's affidavit isn't binding anyway, right? I said, so, okay, so they said you could change your railing, you can't change your railing on my porch, right? You know, so I mean, it's, I said, just, I said, what I would do is correct the record immediately, issue them a letter, here's your correct C of A, right? Here's the changes that we made, bubble the changes that you're making and just say, here's the right one, right? I said, this doesn't bind us to allowing a railing, you know, to being... Oddly enough, I had suggested the Village, I was gonna suggest to the Village Board that night about removing the railing themselves, because I said, it kind of infers that it's being used as this dining or assembling area and that's not what it's for. It's no different than a regular stoop. There's concern about the elevation, but that exists all over the village. You know, you put a few pots on either end or whatever, you know, just to keep people from, those weird angles exist up and down Main Street. So I said, it's not that that, it's, you know, obviously we don't wanna make, increase the, you know, any, any, you know, trip slip and fall, trip hazards, but ironically, he had already done it and they, they were asking me why it was done. That's funny, I was gonna ask you about doing it. And in doing so, damaged the stoop pretty badly too, the concrete got kind of busted up and... So, so obviously where, you know, so we should just keep each, keep us all on check as we review our plans, that we, you know, that when we go to finally sign off on something, that that's the record and that we're really clear that we look at all the details. We don't have as many details because we're pretty much just looking at site plans, but those site plans are just as critical. So I mean, the, really, it's the paper that survives the day, you know, and what we put in the file, so we just wanna make sure that our records are as clean and crisp and as, as conforming to what we believe the, you know, the approval and the resolution was about. That, I think, is easily amended, I don't think it's, you know, so. All right, minutes, we have the minutes from the February 14th. It was, all we had that night was the public hearing. I'm not sure the compliance is, says storefront character, that sounds a little loose, I think it's...
Yeah, I don't think that it was storefront character, it was storefront that supported character.
Basically that it couldn't be closed up, right?
Yeah, character just, character sounds like character, that's not an actual...
It was...
Are you able to pause that?
Yep.
Okay.
What's up?
No, I'll, I'll ask after we review the minutes.
No, go ahead.
Well, if, if they owned the stoop, sorry, this is a little bit of a delayed reaction. If they owned the stoop, then this would be a non-issue. Then they would be able to, if...
The railing?
Yeah.
No, because they didn't, it, the, it's a change to the exterior that the Historic Review Board didn't approve.
But I thought the Historic Review Board did approve it.
They were considering it.
Yeah.
And then later on, on, the whole, the revisions of the, of the drawings didn't change with the discussion.
Oh.
The discussion was, okay, now we're not gonna own the stoop while we're in front of you, so we'd have to come back for any change to that. So it should've been removed from the elevations. It wasn't removed from the elevations and there was no note written on.
But the, potentially, had they owned the stoop, then the Historic Review Board might have approved it.
Well, they, they could, it would've been within the HDRB's purview, to approve an application, like an application to change the stoop.
To change something on the stoop, yeah, okay. And what's the process for purchasing the stoop?
They already started it. You basically go to the Village Board and the Village Board tells you whether or not they have interest, most of the time they're, they do. They, they tell you what the escrow amount is, a $2,000 check, you fill out an application and you, and you, you start the closing process. You remember Bill Florence in front of us saying, $2,000 was too much? And I said, I said, well, that's not the cost, that's just the deposit. Nobody spends $2,000. John happened to be there that night and said, it's around 700 bucks or whatever. They just haven't proceeded with it and they've given no explanation as to why.
Well, and that was the same, in 2014, that same, that same price was provided by the attorney of the town. I, I think there, it was a, it was a range starting at six, something like that.
Hmm, it's interesting.
Hmm.
I just, 'cause I, yeah, I noticed the note here about there being no update to the purchase of the stoop. That's why...
I think he, I don't know, I, is it, do we wanna make, make this bullet a little more accurate? Because it, it isn't just that Bill Florence declined to provide an update saying it wasn't part of the planning board application. He declined to pro, to pro, or his update was that it, the application was not moving forward because he thought that the escrow was too high. I mean, that's true what he said. That is what he said, I don't know.
He said it again at this meeting?
He was, he was kind of all over the place though, because then he later said, I think he then said, I'm not involved in it, which made no sense because he's the attorney.
Right.
I don't know. I mean, there was a lot, yeah, yes, I don't know that the bullet points clear either because there was so much, there's come so much there. How about Mr. Florence did not provide a clear update?
Ah, but more to the point, yeah. I can get behind that edit.
And stated that it was not part of the planning board application, because they did wanna remove it.
Yep.
And I think that came about because obviously I was saying that we need to look at that, because if they're gonna, if they're gonna do a, an accessibility ramp, we need to see it on the site plan, everything needs to be shown.
He also said that he, he didn't wanna talk about, he didn't want...
That was earlier.
No, 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 that one, he was saying, well, if we talk about that, I don't wanna do, we have to go into a closed session to talk about the ADA complaint.
That was the previous one.
No, he said it again, I think.
He asked for another one, yeah.
Public hearing or something.
All right, so I think the calls for maintaining, I'm just gonna change, the Village's comprehensive plan calls for maintaining, and in quotes, it says storefront character. That kind of, to me, sounds as if it's some sort of architectural type, not architectural in, in form of structure, but in appearance. I think it really should just, calls for maintaining the ground floor storefronts of Main Street.
Was there something about...
It's not, uh, my time to carry on for... The health, and it's to ensure the health and continuity of business. Yeah, what, it's not as...
But that's tied, tied to the Main Street.
Yeah. All right, anybody else have any other changes? Motion to accept the amendment, that's an amendment?
So moved.
Moved by Hawkins, seconded by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, our first and only order of business, well, we can go through 21 really quick, we'll just introduce the project, it's the next one on the, I guess it's in general. The 21 Parsonage is, it's a small, non-conforming lot, it's 48 by 70, in the, it is in the historic district, right? I think it's in the local historic district. I don't think you guys are familiar with it, there's the two brick buildings on Parsonage, not Parsonage, on Pine Street that face each other, really sweet. And then behind the one, on the, on the north side of the street, is the original accessory structure, the two-story shed. And they wanna convert that into a, into kind of a tiny house residence. So, well, I think what we need to see first, the applicant wasn't, didn't follow the agendas and so they're, and they weren't ready to come in anyway, he had said today. So, one thing we need to do is see the, the subdivision site plan. The sub, the property, the lot was created by subdivision in 1984, May 19th of 1984. And it used to be a single lot, I guess, as part of an estate, I think for two heirs of the estate, I think maybe brother and sister, something like that, they split it down the middle. And I don't know what is on that subdivision plat map, so we need to see kind of what's on it, why they did it, whether or not there's any restrictions or any variances. I don't know if the Village, if it was done properly, so we need to kind of look at, a 48 by 70 is not a buildable lot, right, under R1. So it would require a variance to build, so we need to see what's on the subdivision site plan. The historic district, the historic district review board obviously is interested in maintaining the structure, but it's kind of in a way of like 35 Market Street, which is a complete deconstruction, we'll call it, and then a reconstruction, but it wouldn't be, I don't think they, I don't...
A dismantling and a rebuild using the orig, using that original material?
I don't see how you could. I mean, it's a, it's, it's, it's not in great shape. It's like a 1935 structure, according to the tax map.
They're all just the, the boards and stuff, I think it, it looks like a ready-to-fall things.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not been maintained, then it's, you know, and so it's like a, you know, it has, it's a, you know, it's a frame, a wood frame structure that hasn't been maintained, but, you know, I don't know if the roof's been maintained either, so it's probably taken on water. So anyway, somebody recently bought it and then wants to create a tiny house. So we'll, we'll take a look at the application, but I think the first step for us is to look at the subdivision, to see what notes are put on the subdivision plat map, to see if they said, okay, you know, that we're providing a variance for these lots, or that, or it was missed, or I don't know what. Because obviously anything that we do then sets precedent for anybody else that has a small lot. There is a narrow, there was an amendment to the code for, for, for narrow lots. So it was a narrow lot, you know, amendment, we should make...
Is this, is this considered a narrow lot?
It is a narrow lot, yeah.
Is it narrow?
Yeah. But, yeah, 'cause it has to, it has to do with the overall size. Or small, I guess that's a small lot provision.
Okay, okay.
But anyway, that can't apply to this property, we should all be aware that that amendment, not that we do variances, but that amendment is for lots that were not under the same ownership, within the same family, at the point zoning went into effect, which was, was 67 or 63 every year it was. This happened in 84, so you can't apply the narrow, you can narrow the side yards down to like seven and a half feet, as opposed to 10 feet.
So will, is the applicant providing the planning board with the plat?
I asked them today, I, I, that's where I started, 'cause I said, that's really where everything needs to start, is to look at that subdivision, to see why these lots were created and if any restrictions or variances were granted. There could possibly be restrictions, to just say, okay, we're gonna let you do this, you can't develop it.
Yeah.
Right, I don't know, we don't know what was done, we'll have to see it. So that's been ordered, John ordered a copy. The, that has not yet come in. And, 'cause the, our county doesn't have anything online, so they couldn't, the records aren't online, so they have to be physically ordered.
So contemporary.
So the applicant is gonna come in to our next meeting, 'cause they weren't ready for this one, so, but they said they'll, they'll order from the title company, 'cause I said, the title company will absolutely have it. I had asked Erin, I said, if, I would think that if there's any bank involved in this, that, that somebody would've, the title company, the bank would've reviewed this. So I said, so that's what they're gonna look at now. So anyway, so just a, they wanna do a tiny house on a small lot, so we'll get further into this when we're, when we have everything we need.
Can I just ask a question about the narrow lot amendment that you were referring to?
Yeah.
You said that, so that narrow lot amendment allows for side yards to go from 10 foot to 7.5 feet or something like that?
It's, it's, it's very, it's very weird, it's like, yeah, you take it, like, for every four inches, I forget what it is, it's, it's a, it's a factor. It's been kind of misunderstood because the, the, the thought was that the other side could go to zero, which is not the case. It's basically just that you can, yeah, I don't, I don't have...
You can reduce the side yards or something, or side yard...
Yeah, I think it can go down to like seven and a half feet.
Okay, but you said it doesn't apply to this.
It can't apply to this because this, not only was it under the same ownership, the whole thing was under the same family ownership. When, when, when zoning overlays happen, like, that happened in the Adirondack Park. You know, families would, would buy a parcel of land and then subdivide, so every family member had their little parcel. Land use doesn't like that, right? You don't like all these small lots, it's just, there's a lot of impact infrastructure and it's, you know, and so, but when they did the zoning overlay, it said that they all get combined and can never be split again, right? So in this case, there, it's the reverse, they're saying that we're gonna offer, we're gonna offer this small lots provision, but only to lots that predate zoning, that are not, you know, really not self-created, that are, that have to do with things that were going on in the Victorian village before cars, before zoning, before...
And zoning was predate, so in this case, this was subdivided in 1984, but zoning happened in...
I think it was 67, whatever date, if you look at the Village Code, there's a, there's an accepted date. I think it's 67, I think. Might be 63, it's one or the other.
Thank you.
Yeah, so then that can't be applied to this one. 'Cause not, 'cause obviously it was under the same family ownership and in fact was the same lot.
Okay.
So I think there's no argument.
So in a sense, like, we would be looking at it as a single lot, almost?
Well, so, well, it's weird because the, it's a weird, it's a, it's an unusual application because you have a structure that has been orphaned, an accessory structure's been orphaned from its main dwelling structure, right? So the use is what? Well, it's still an accessory structure. The evidence of that is nobody's ever lived in it, right? You know, so it's, you know, so you now have an accessory structure with almost no front yard setback and a very small side yard setback because it was the accessory structure to the house over here, right? So now somebody wants to make that a dwelling, right? And there was some talk about restoring it, I don't, the, based on the drawings that we've seen, which are very modern, a very modern glass and, glass and wood structure, it, it's not really preser, it's not really preserving the barn, nor do, nor do I think you could preserve the barn. I think it's so far gone. I think you could preserve it for a barn, you know, 'cause I mean, you could obviously just, you know, it's a wood structure, you can add more wood. But...
It peeked through the hole, it seems it's gonna fall, right?
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's not been maintained and it, you know, and obviously it was built as a, I don't know where it is.
It's okay, yeah, I, I get it.
So, we'll, we'll have to look at the site plan, the subdivision plat map first, see if there's any notes on it, then they'll come in, hopefully they'll come in with that, hopefully we'll get it before that.
Okay.
And then we'll take a look at it. Obviously, the most defensible decisions a board can make are to follow the code, right? So it would seem to me that the, the smartest thing to do would be to place, to place the new structure with conforming rear and side yard setbacks, 'cause those are where the impacts are. Those are also where potential suits and claims could come from, right? That I don't like this this close to me and I don't like this this close to me. Or the next owner doesn't, the first owner loves it, the next one that buys it doesn't love it. And then, so why did you allow this? Well, we allowed it 'cause we wanted to preserve the mass of a lost historic structure. It's not a good answer, right? You know, I, but if you just say, hey, we followed our code, and the only one that can't complain is the sidewalk and the, and the street, right? And we don't want a 25-foot yard, we don't want a 25-foot front yard anyway, right? The Village doesn't want that, the code update committee is working on correcting that anyway. So if they give them a variance on the front yard and place the, you know, the, the property, luckily, they've got a small lot, but they want a tiny house, 16 by 20. So you can actually do a conforming, you could do a conforming site plan. I don't know in our code though, whether or not what, that's so funny.
No, it's been...
So I don't know, I don't know whether a conforming, I don't know whether driveways are considered lot coverage. But I mean, I did a quick schematic and I, you show you could place the house and come up with a 900 square foot house, which is not tiny, by tiny house standards, and, and only be a 28% lot coverage and 30% is allowable, right? So I mean, I think that, and I don't think driveways count as lot coverage in ours, they don't, I don't think they do, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah, so I think that you, you could even have a driveway if you wanted. They're not planning on having a driveway, I think they want, they want all garden. So hopefully we can, you know, we can kind of figure out what the best way is there, but in my opinion, it's, it's as much conformance as possible, because in that way, you don't have to explain anything to, you know, to other folks. 'Cause it, no, it's amazing, I mean, in, people see things on paper and they're fine with it, and then they see it built and they're like, holy, I had no idea the impacts, right? You know, so then they don't like it, right? You think you go through all these public hearings and everybody's gonna be happy. I can't tell you the number of people that have, that have told me, oh, that Butterfield building is huge, and I said, that's not the big building, that's the smaller building. The big one hasn't been built yet, and they're like, you, that can't be true. I'm like, that's, their perception of what, what it's gonna be, even with models and even getting, you know, down and looking at them, you don't, you can't tell. So the easiest thing to do is just say, hey, we followed the code, right? You know, and, and I think that's the smartest thing to do in something like this. You know, I mean, it, it, the self-created piece is there, you bought a lot that basically doesn't have a dwelling on it that has, and with, you're certainly within your rights to restore the shed to a shed, to a beautiful shed, right? But creating a dwelling is a different, is a different, is a different story, so we'll...
It's not only the impacts of the people in, for that particular lot, but like Matt and I were talking earlier, it's the potential impacts of other lots throughout the village.
Yeah.
You know, you let them do it, so you should let me do it.
Yeah, so you, yeah, so we set precedent, like I was talking about the parking waivers, that I said, I know why these parking waivers were introduced, I wanna look at the, so code exists and code is a, you know, is obviously written in English and you read the English, but it gets interpreted, and then it's also interpreted based on what was behind it. When the introduce, when the mayor introduced the local law, when the boards reviewed the local law, there's all this documentation that says, okay, for commercial applications in their existing configurations, it's a way to get those approved, right? So it's very clear the legislative intent was not to, you know, take a bunch of second, third, fourth story apartments, subdivide and buy a bunch of parking waivers and send a bunch of cars down to Main Street where we have this, for long-term parking, right? You know, as opposed to short trip parking. So we have to be very mindful that every decision we make could set precedent, and that's why we had so many whereas statements in Two Stone Street to say, okay, we accept that, they wanted to greatly increase the number of residential units in there. And we said, look, we accept that the waivers are available to take same for same, right? If it's three apartments, use the waivers to create three more apartments, try to provide as much on-site as you can, right? But the waivers are not there for an expansion... But the waivers are not there for an expansion of use and decrease impact, because there's nowhere for it to go. But I mean, there's just, there, we don't, you know, there's no more parking. You know, so that's, yeah, so as David's saying, what we do is really obviously setting precedent as well, so. All right, what do we have here? This is not that. Okay. Fifteen Main.
So, you know that beautiful building on Fifteen Main Street?
Yeah. Hopefully, you're gonna make it beautiful.
Well, we're not ready to reveal the design yet, but we do have something very exciting, you know, for it. And so the, what, we are, what's challenging with this site is that we're built almost to the lot line. And, um, that's just the nature of it.
All the way around.
Yeah, that's just the nature of the building.
Cause that, that parcel has no rear access, right? Some of them go all the way through. That one's just, that one's landlocked, right?
It is landlocked, uh, with the exception of the front porch.
Right.
Um, and we do have one off-site parking space. And, um, so what our client is proposing to do is split the space and do a commercial in the front half. So this is the Main Street, um, commercial in the front half. And then have, uh, just one floor, you know, apartment dwelling in the back.
Like a mullet. Business in the front, not in the back.
Um, and so it's, uh, and one thing that we wanted to ask is, um, well, she, and she's all proposing to put it in front stoop, but she knows that she has to purchase that sidewalk, you know, space before she can get that permit.
Would you wanna do it all at once? It doesn't take that long.
Yeah, I mean, we would. I know for us, I mean, for our office, we got the, we bought the sidewalk before we were given C O V, so.
Yeah.
So, long story short, I mean, um, I mean, this can be added on, but it would look ugly without it, because the, the design is integral. Now, so this heavy border line is the, the property line. And, you know, we're not expanding outward by any means, so updating insulation, uh, we're insulating to the interior.
Right.
With some smart products. And then we're also, for floodplain, we are raising the ground for level and then creating a, like a concrete bathtub, waterproofed, and then floodgate, 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 wherever we have the doors. So that's our approach to design, and, um, so she's keeping the roof line exactly the same. The back, we would, because we are raising the floor, the back roof is low, so we are just going to continue that front roof to the back. That's, that's the extent of it. The, um.
I mean, I think you're twenty-two feet to the ridge, if I remember. You're well within the, yeah.
Height, uh, let's see, let me just check my numbers here. Allowable height is, um, thirty-six.
Thirty-five, right?
Thirty, thirty-five, I'm sorry, thirty, my eyes are going. Seventeen feet is what we have measured.
Oh, wow.
To the peak.
What you have now?
Yes.
So you're gonna increase the peak or no?
No, 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 no increase to the peak. Now, what else? Uh, one thing is, um, we are definitely closing some windows. We are definitely closing some windows that are just looking into neighbor's shed and things like that. But we will need to replace some windows in an existing location, um, which means, um, according to code, we have to make them, you know, fireproof, uh, if that, as variance.
Lot line windows, yeah.
I think there's a variance that we would need to that. Um, um, the, what else? So parking, when, when we look at, so the front, the commercial space, she wants to use it as a cafe. But I wanted to know if, if it's any different if she wants to do it as a wine bar. So she's interested in having, you know, a specialty wine, and she's not, it's not, she won't have loud music, you know, it's just, and we didn't, we didn't want to use the word bar, because that's not really her, her idea of business, but it, it will, you know, serve wine and beer. And it would be like a cafe combination of that. So it's kind of like a low-key, um, lounge. Yeah, yeah. Something like that. Um, and, um, you know, she's not, so that's just a very low-key use of that space. So I just wanted to make sure.
Is she applying for a liquor license, or?
Not a liquor license, just wine and beer.
Right.
Yeah, no hard liquor.
Right.
Yeah, so it's not a rowdy place, we're not, you know.
Is it like, uh, daytime hours as well as, you think, or is that not planned yet?
How much wine can you have during the day?
I mean, but it's a cafe, yeah.
Cafe is fine.
I'm just curious, not, I don't think it really.
Store hours, we haven't set the store hours yet, that's more to be determined, I guess, with conversation with the neighbors to, you know, be mindful about what the neighbors would appreciate, you know, so.
Yeah, that's true, there really is no business, I mean.
Down.
The recovey, right, it's right next to the concafe.
Yeah.
But they closed it, yeah. House and house is almost there.
And that used to be, it used to be a bar downstairs when they, before they like.
Before they raised it, yeah.
Speakeasy or something.
Yeah.
It wasn't a speakeasy, it was like a.
No, I'm just kidding, I'm just saying. But, um, yeah, so she just wants to have like a very, you know, light, um, kinda cafe slash wine bar. Um.
I know this isn't like exact what you're doing, but I noticed there, it doesn't appear that there's a, any sort of cooking facility.
Correct, no cooking.
No cooking.
I mean, it's just, um, maybe like warmer, you know, warming.
A panini press.
Yeah, something like that. That, that could be the extent of it, microwave, yeah. No cooking, no, um.
No commercial ovens or?
No, no. Just warming up whatever's prepared elsewhere.
I see, to be a very small doors.
Where, I'm sorry, where?
Why no pocket doors? I'm interested to know why you didn't do pocket doors.
Oh, where?
Where? In the bathroom.
Oh.
Or in the, in the, going into storage and the off, I'm just, you know, there are new walls and so.
Oh, because we are trying to do, like, first three feet in C M U wall.
Oh, I don't know what C M U is.
Concrete block walls, so that if, if, for, for heaven's sake, if, you know, God forbid, water does come in, we wanted to, you know, to be wet, designed for wetness, yeah, so.
I see.
Yeah, but that's a very good question.
So there'll be a, a change of use, right, and, uh-huh, okay.
And the parking variance is what you're gonna.
Right, so you, you're.
Parking waiver for the contest.
So one for three seats, you're requiring five, obviously, you can, you're providing.
One for department.
The carport, they're able to get, they're able to park the car and get out of the car?
Yes, we were looking at that, yeah. And it's, it's only one door, you can only go to one door.
Of the car?
Yeah.
One side?
Um, inside, yeah, one side. Um, and she said, if it's any concession, you know, she's the owner of the, um, the modern house by the river, so, North Street, um, so she said she can offer up to three parking spat, spots on her property if that alleviates the pressure from here. So she could, you know, offer, to provide more parking.
Oh, for the cafe?
Yeah.
I think that, I mean.
Well, you're, she's entitled to apply for.
Yeah, I mean, she's in the B ones, so.
Parking waiver.
Yeah.
Yeah, the B ones are for, and it was a commercial space, obviously, the residential has to be provided on-site. Cause there's no, it's not an existing residential use.
This will require a curb cut, which will cost a parking space. Well, well, unless there's, um, you know, like, you can't have somebody parking on the street if there's a new curb cut, right?
Uh-huh.
So that means that one of the street, I mean, that sort of.
Oh, I see, yes, we're losing parking space on Main Street. Aye, um.
No, and, and I'm, I'm not saying, I'm just saying it's something to beware of, not like, you can't do it, or anything like that, I'm just, this is, there has to be, I think this the village, does the, is there a protocol for applying for curb cut?
Hmm. We'll have to look into it, we'll have to look into it.
Yeah. And are there any trees, um, actually?
Oh, there is one tree that, that we will, yes, there is actually a tree out there that we would have to either move or, or mitigate, yeah.
Okay, so if, um, if where the arrow is pointing, there is a, a, a village-owned tree, we, we should probably cross-reference to the tree.
Committee, yeah.
Tree committee, right?
She's totally willing to do that, yeah.
Just talking, cause I remember in the tree management plan that, uh, is part of our tree ordinance, there's, there is a protocol about, that's where I was thinking, there is a protocol for curb cuts and how to.
Got it, got it.
Sort of mitigate impacts, what, you know, sort of just what, what the pros, like, the, what the, what questions need to be answered and how to go about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think tree committee is such a great, great thing, because when I go visit neighborhoods that are high in value, you know, the tree-lined streets are just like the, the asset.
Yeah.
So I, I hugely appreciate that. Um, okay, so.
And I don't know if there's, um, uh, if there's an application process? Is that, is that something that could become the, come to our attention? Do we, do we direct the applicant to go and make sure you
To the tree?
Apply to the tree committee for taking down the tree?
It would be a, it would be a condition.
Okay.
A condition of approval.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we don't, we get that far. And then I, we have to figure out the curb as well.
Yeah.
Most towns, I don't know how they do it here, but most towns, it's the building inspector that go, would go out and review the location, because you could also have, you know, a water valve in the area where you wanna do a curb cut, so somebody's gonna have to cut it and drop the valve down.
Right, right. Yeah.
Right.
That's.
Most of the valves are in the street, but in some locations, they're actually adjacent to the sidewalk.
Um, this, uh, has this been, was this built as a carport originally, this space? That's like, was that contemplated as a carport? What?
I've never seen a car parked there.
Yeah, I haven't either, but I kinda can't remember, there's like a.
Yeah, there's definitely a coverage that exists.
Yeah.
Um, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that was ever intended, but we, we tried fitting and we, we said, oh, well, at least we can get one side open. Because we thought that, let's say, if a family lives here, you know, showing kids and strollers, you know, I'm, obviously, uh, that, um, would, we have few steps, but anyway, having a car right in front of your house would be a nice amenity to have. And, um, what else? Um, ah, does the planning board have any requirement on ADA access? That was a question that we had, because if we had to do a handicap access to the bar, to the, the wine bar, it would be a tricky situation, you know, we certainly don't wanna, um, uh, discriminate against, um, uh, peo- people on wheelchair. We thought it's such a short run. We would rather have staff, um, help.
An assisted entry.
Yeah, assisted entry, um, so that we can have this lively outdoor space.
Yeah, the, the code complacency is not us, but certainly, we look at, we look at kind of the overarching, you know, like fit, planning and all that. And so certainly, we would, you know, you know, we're gonna, w- w- we need to see any changes to the exterior to, to accommodate, but, um, but yeah, I mean, if it's assisted entry, then you, then you meet the code with code enforcement when you go to go, get to, uh, construction documents. But on the site plan, we just need to see kind of what, what's happening on the site plan.
Yeah.
With respect to ramping or, you know, any of that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it could have easily met if we weren't raising the floor, because we had to raise the floor with the floodplain. That became a new issue because of that.
It's not a deep enough run?
Right, it's, yeah, yeah, it would take over the whole front porch.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, if we weren't raising, then it would've been easier.
Cause you're on grade, it's on pretty much, plus a grade, right?
It's a little curve, it's a little curve, but.
The floodwater certainly knows it's on grade.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I mean, that, we'd have to iron out with the, with code enforcement. I mean, it's a brand-new construction, so I mean, it's, it's subject all, you know, state, local, federal statutes, so.
Yeah.
Um, but how you do that, obviously, is, you know.
Yeah, we could, yeah, it would be a trade-off, one thing or another, yeah.
Kill the patio.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, because a patio adds such a character to the street life, we didn't wanna kill the patio. I mean, we did have a solution, but we would have to lose this, you know, we would have to lose a parking.
Oh, because of the, how, how.
Long it takes for the ramp.
Approach.
Cause, yeah, yeah, the, yeah.
Yeah, so, so those were, were questions and, um.
Yeah, I mean, you could, it might make sense to talk to the building inspector, um, prior to having construction documents, just to get a general sense of what he's doing. I, it's interesting, cause I couldn't, I wasn't very clear what was with respect to the, the Silverstone, um, conversion. Um, and you would think that a hotel, you know, that, that is all new construction, all new partitioning, and this is a, this is new construction as well, it's all new partitioning, it's, it's all, it's a new build. Um, I certainly know in the projects that I work on, it, it, you know, they're, you, you touch it, you own it, right? You know? So a lot of things we decide not to touch, cause we don't, you know, we don't want. Um, and then, and then I've worked on projects where it's very complicated to make them accessible, because they're historic, but yet the ADA still wants you, you know, you're still required to do like an assisted entry, right? Which is typically, maybe doors are too close together, or they're too narrow, and you have, somebody has to hold the doors.
Yeah.
You know, you have to have a buzzer and somebody has to hold the doors and, you know, but that's just because the, you know, the.
Physical constraints of an existing structure.
Getting from here up to here, right, if you, cause you're doing the bathtub, that's a very different, you know, I mean, that's.
They do it in the city and it, and it's very cost prohibitive, because basically what you have is you have a low lift elevator. You know, where it's just wide enough for the wheelchair to get in.
Right.
It goes up, you know, sometimes only, you know, twenty inches or twenty-four inches. But they cut down on the ramp access, because all they gotta do is create a little vestibule. You know, it's basically double door, you go in one, you get in the structure, it raises twenty inches, and then you're in the entrance way.
Yeah.
Here, if you were exposed to floodwaters, I think that that would be a challenge.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
Machine to work after there's a.
Well, everything's gonna need some work after the flood, and you're not out there, and, you know, you don't have a customer in a wheelchair.
Invest in something that's gonna be.
In the water, pretty soon.
Potent, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and to clarify, you know, we're not, um, changing, we're not taking down the, the walls, um, with the exception of the back to give a little bit of outdoor space, but, um, but the, yeah, insulation is inward, we're, you know, existing C M U, we're using existing concrete block walls and the roof frame, you know, up here, um, we're just lifting this.
Yeah, it might be worthwhile to just talk to the building inspector first, to just say what, um, I'm not actually aware of what, what they're doing with respect to ADA access. We haven't had any, we haven't had any applications where they're doing major, um, major construction, right? Where it's a, you know, resident, on, on commercial.
Right.
Um, on residential, obviously, we don't, the, the planning board doesn't get involved, um, and obviously, it wouldn't be applied to residential. So it might be worth talking to him, especially cause obviously, it's a new building inspector, newish.
Yeah, yeah.
What they're, what his, um, what his read is on it. Typically, it has to do with percentage of work, right? But you're at a hundred percent work, right? You're, you're touching the whole space. Some towns, not this one, or you have to do with dollars, a percentage of budget. You know, at a percentage of budget, or you, you reach, you reach a minimum and then you have to, you have to staff, you have to, you know, you have to assign a percentage of a budget to, to bring things up to compliance.
Yeah.
So, cause obviously, the, the, the federal statute is that you're all, it's, there's always an eye towards achieving accessibility.
Yes, that's true, that's true. Um, all right.
So it'd probably be worth, um, it'd probably be worth talking, and we'll just see how that, cause obviously, well, I mean, at this point, well, at this point, you could provide access without owning the stoop, well, no, you couldn't, because you're, because the, cause of what you're doing, the bathtub.
Yes, um, so what I was thinking is, then we would have to lose the parking spot for the residential and just come up, and there will be landing for the residential, and then go in, maybe side door, or something like that.
The only thing is, I'm not aware, we'd have to kind of scour the code, I'm not aware of a pathway to add residential without providing parking. The permits are not, they're waving.
Bergman is open to providing, oh, does it have to be on-site? No.
But if you have somebody living in the back.
If Laura Bergman is, is open to allowing her resident to park around the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
On her property, is that?
I, I don't know that that can actually be written into a, you know, into a site plan.
But why would you be losing the residential parking? Oh, cause it's one.
It's the only one, yeah.
To do a ramp up, yeah.
What's the, what's the grade change from the sidewalk to the first floor?
Right now, we're proposing, um.
You must have at least three or four feet, right, to stay out of the water.
We're doing two, twenty-four inches from grade and then a, a tub, yeah. Yeah, annual flood level was just a few inches above this. So it was the, let's say, like, the current finished floor was at like an annual flood level. was at like an annual flood level.
Mm-hmm.
So we were going at least twenty-four inches from that. We didn't want to make it so high where this is uninviting, and the, these are too many steps, so we were trying to mitigate, um, but if, let's say, a hundred year, I mean, I have to check with our staff about a hundred-year floodplain, because that was the, the last question that I asked them.
Yeah.
Well, we did, I, yeah, and then two thousand, was it two thousand fourteen? Was it, uh, Sandy or Irene? The one that was the ocean event, um, the, it took, it did rise higher than the salon levels of the houses on West Street, and so, I don't, I think that maybe, is that higher than twenty-four?
Oh, yeah.
Very much so.
Yeah, it was, I was talking to the.
I think it's about four feet of water.
His water level was at the base of his counter.
It's, it's at the countertop, yeah, it was in his house, he had water at the countertop.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that was almost, that was about three feet.
Three feet?
And then he went ahead and renovated everything, ripped everything out, and then they got flooded again, it wasn't as high the second time, but, which is the reason why he moved.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we couldn't go up four feet, so that's why we're doing the bathtub, you know.
And as it is, you need, you need twenty-four feet to be able to have the ramp to make up the two feet that you got.
Oh, you need twenty-four, because one or twelve?
Twenty-four, oh, okay.
Yeah, so I would, I would talk to the building inspector, just talk about the, you have a, an existing condition, right, which is that it's in a floodplain. You know, I mean, that's, that's made the NFIT maps now to basically say, you know, stilts or abandonment, right? You know, so I mean, there's a real, it's a, it's a known issue. I, I think the last NFIT map suggested abandonment all the way up to the tracks. You know, as one, that's one solution, obviously, others are just raised things, right, you know, but that's a, it's not a small, you know.
What was interesting was, I was walking, um, at a beach community, so there was only one building that was on grade, and everybody else was on stilts, so the older building looked out of place compared to.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think you have to, you have to accept reality, you know?
Can't do that, you know, yeah, yeah, so we, I was picturing cold spring, all the buildings on stilts.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't, to me, it's like, if you can save the structures that way, then why let them wash away in the floods? I mean, I don't, yes, you don't, so you don't want stilts, but you can also do these, you know, kind of this Charleston-looking, you know, raised center, you know, where there's a, there's a sacrificial first floor.
Yeah.
Right, you know, but if the alternative is just to watch them all wash away, I don't know that that's a historic preservation either, you know? Cause I mean, how many of these can they survive? I mean, luckily, the Hudson House raised much higher than anybody else did, and it's, and it, that's what's, that's what saved them.
And that was very foresightful of them, they did it.
Oh, my God, it was decades ago.
They did it a couple, uh, yeah, like, you know, in the eighties.
Eighties or something like that, I think it was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was very foresightful. Um, all right.
Yeah, so I would talk to, I mean, I don't know what extenuating circumstances exist, when, you know, when, there could have something to do with square footage, that it's not a lot of square footage, that it's, you know, it's an eight-hundred-square-foot facility.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll have a, a talk with him, and then, so as far as the planning board application goes, should we just make it a formal application? But now, what about the sidewalk purchase issue? I mean, we could always add that on later on, um, that shouldn't hold up the whole, but we can add that portion on.
Yeah, you just have to come back for a site plan amendment later.
Okay.
And then, obviously, you've got, then you have to do the historic district review twice, too.
But if you could do it on one.
It might be worth seeing if you could expedite the, cause it really is just moving to a closing, right, it's really just having, and John's been, John's been doing them so quickly, the village attorney, I don't,
It shouldn't.
I don't think it takes very long.
Hours to go in two months.
Yeah, it, I don't think it should take, I'm really surprised it took that long. I understood that it could be, they, they move quickly, it can be done in like four to six weeks.
Okay.
Well, especially if it's, especially if it's cash, do you, I mean, obviously, there's not involving banks, you don't have much money.
In two thousand fourteen, when we discussed it with the attorney, when we were talking about Jimmy buying this.
I mean, it's cost per square foot, right?
Yeah.
And it's not much, I mean, nobody's taking mortgage out for these things, right?
No, and she has said it, it wouldn't.
No, yeah, we did it cash as well, it was only a few thousand dollars.
Yes. Yes.
The attorney at that time, the, um, when we were talking about Jimmy buying the street in two thousand fourteen, the attorney at the time said it shouldn't take more than four weeks, she said.
Yeah, I mean, I, you might be better off doing it that way, and just, and accelerating that, as talking to the village, uh, to the village board as soon as possible.
I think that's great.
And I don't think you need to wait, I don't see why you need to appear in front of the village board, it's a transaction, it's a sign.
Well, no, they can vote on it, I mean, they'll, I think they'll discuss it, they'll discuss it, you don't need to be present, you just need to.
Then you can do your design.
Right.
And get everything approved at once.
Because it would be cheaper to do that than come back twice every time, yeah.
Public hearings, and, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the HRV is definitely gonna want a public hearing if you're gonna add a porch later to the front of the building.
Right, yeah.
So you're gonna, then you have to go through two.
Yeah, yeah, so this is.
Ours would just be one, cause the only thing we'd have to do a public hearing for is a change of use.
Okay.
We wouldn't have to do a public hearing, just do a site plan amendment for a porch.
Okay.
But yeah, I think that would be, I, that's what I would advise.
Yeah.
And then get, and then also get the answer from the building inspector with respect to what you're doing on the porch, right? And if he says that there's a way around it, or some sort of assist, or, you know.
Yeah, the Le Bouchon has an assisted entry, they have staffed, you know, they have steps, it isn't ADA compliant, you know, to access it from the porch, but they have an assisted entry, and there's a sign, there's signage for it.
Where do they bring them in?
Probably signage required.
I think that there's the patio in the back.
In the back.
Like a good idea, in the wintertime.
Through the garden.
Doors closed, yeah, I think the buzzer is a great idea.
Well, wait a minute, obviously, the carport, although the carport's gonna be occupied, and you couldn't get a wheelchair pass there.
Well, if you have a car, you have a car, and if they ha, if they want to rent this to somebody, somebody lives there, apparently, all the time, the car will park there.
Yeah.
That's, that's, you know, otherwise, if, if you don't have this car park, and you have a lot room to maneuver, right now, the only room available will be occupied by a car.
Yeah, but you live here, and on the weekend in the summer, you're gonna want a place to park your car.
Well, I wonder if, well, wait a minute, but this thing's thirty feet long.
This is pretty long, I was just thinking.
Couldn't the car be pulled up and that you could access here?
Yeah.
A, but with the ramp?
Yeah.
How would we fit the ramp?
Cause you need twenty-four feet.
Assisted, assisted.
Oh, assisted.
Either assisted entry through.
Cause obviously, if you can roll a car, then you should be able to assist a person in a wheelchair a bit.
Yeah.
How many, so, how many feet do you need for the ramp? Is it eighteen, yeah?
You're one-eighth?
Uh, this is a, oh, it is a one-eighth, I thought it was a, yeah, one-eighth.
Yes, you've got, oh, it's right here, it's.
Only, a little bit less than.
Yeah, but you have a lot.
Oh, so the car could drive right up to the height of the, you know, the entry?
Yeah, you've got like twenty-five feet.
Oh, the ramp.
And a spot is eighteen by nine, right?
Eighteen.
So you have another seven feet. If you could, if you basically say that the car has to pull up, it would still be assisted.
Or you could do some corner thing, I don't know.
But how does the drive elevation relate to the floor plate, though? It's, it's, it's still hitting your bathtub, right? It's coming on the edge of your bathtub?
It is, it is, um.
Well, just a thought, I mean, just that you at least, cause you.
But I mean, the, the front half of it could be, the first seven feet could be a concrete ramp, and the rest of it can be gravel. And the gravel, basically, will perk the water, I mean, under normal circumstances, and what's concrete should push the water back to Main Street.
And they've got a roof over it, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that might be one option, but again, it may be that the building inspector has a pathway, it's different, or, or some sort of, or some sort of, um, relief from it.
So you get, you get in from the side here, or you're still gonna go into the front door?
Probably.
The porch is gonna be elevated above the drive.
Yeah, so I think we will have to go from the side in order to get the right.
Yeah.
Turnaround space, hmm, that will, that would be tough.
It, it may, there may be an exception, too, to making it, it may, it may be something that they say cannot be made accessible because of the size of it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Um, and because of the limitations, so the, Greg's gonna know, Greg knows code very well.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, it's a, it's a very small space, where it's, it's, it's under a thousand square feet, right?
Yeah, it is a little, uh, little over, I think, a little over, so, so.
Yeah, no, the apartment's a little over, it's just, the cafe says it's nine, nine eighty-eight or something like that, ninety-six, yeah, so I mean, it's small, and.
Yeah. Gross, this is a hundred square foot, two thousand and change.
Okay. Yeah, so that might be one option, is the first, you know, five to seven feet to assist somehow.
Mm-hmm. Maybe we can even incorporate it into the front porch, so that we're not making two doors into the place, um.
Yeah.
Have this like relatable or what have you.
But yeah, I mean, just, but again, you, you, there may be a way around it, too, not, not to suggest that you try to get around it, but I mean, whatever the, you know, whatever the code requirement is, and then that way, then if you're purchasing the stoop and talking to the building inspector and doing everything all in one, you know, in one felt swoop, then you're gonna get it all right.
Right.
And not have any surprises later, so.
Yeah, I think that's a great, great way to strategize.
And, and we, I think, you know, absent that, I think, cause obviously, you, you guys know what you're doing, you know exactly what we're looking for, it's all here, it's a zoning conformance chart, it's the, you know, it's the, you know, um, and obviously, the site plan's here, so I mean, I think we're, once you do that, we're, I think we could move very quickly to public hearing, I don't think we, I don't think there's anything else we need to see. Um, there's no cooking, there's no, you know, I mean, there's no commercial ovens, no. But we'll, we'll do some research on the curb cut, we've actually never done a curb cut.
Yeah.
Is there, is there any concerns about the fire escape and so on, if we have something in the back here, it's cooking, that's, you know, it's apartment, where do they go for, for fire things as we?
Well, I mean, they're gonna want.
Just for Jimmy.
They're gonna want, again, it's a small space, and they're gonna, they're gonna vector off of, you know, the paths of travel, and it's, it's quite small, so they're gonna have an exit here, they're gonna have an exit here, I mean, I would think two exits.
Good enough, or?
From an apartment, from a thousand-square-foot apartment is more than enough.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, they can, um, that's up to the bill, that's up to code enforcement.
Yeah, the fire department can definitely, there's an alleyway here, there.
Between the neighbor and property, yeah.
Passing to the next, but yet they can get to that, you know, the fire department can.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, and that's not a bounded space, it's, um, open.
Right, there's an alleyway there, yeah.
Okay.
It's through the neighbors, but.
Right, yeah, no, it can't be considered a, a point of egress, cause you can't, cause you can't maintain it.
Okay.
Even with an easement, it doesn't count, you have to, you have to, you have to egress onto, you're gonna egress on a property that you own, this one, I don't know how that works, cause you don't own what you, but, but it exists.
Yeah, then it becomes the area of refuge, perhaps, you know?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So, but Greg will, Greg will help you out there, too, so I just, um, you, I mean, he's, you've been working with him already, right, you must be? He's been here over, oh, you guys are working for us, huh?
On other projects, not, not on this one, per se, we've asked him a couple of questions, um, we wanted to, um, have your input before we brought it, you know, to this attention, but.
One of the, one of the things we've looked at in the past for commercial spaces in, um, is lighting, exterior lighting. I don't know if that would be something that's within our purview to review as part of the.
No, we do, we do the lighting plan, yeah.
We do, okay.
Oh, uh, just, uh.
Exterior lighting on the, yeah.
Yeah, she definitely wants two scuns, oh, I'm sorry, here, the two wall scuns is here, um, I mean, we can definitely put, you know, light fixtures in here or, or wall, or wall scuns, I think it's better to do it, uh, here.
It's covered, right?
Covered, yes, this is covered.
Yeah, and you guys know, obviously, the, about the comprehensive plan and the, you know, full cutoff fixtures.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which I'm sure you're gonna want, especially down there, cause it's nice and dark down there.
Now, what if there's a roof over, do we still have to do full cutoff on these, like, fixtures? Just curious.
I wouldn't think so, yeah. We don't, there's not a whole lot of photo, there's not any photometrics in our code. Um, we should think about that, especially with, you know, recent developments, especially with these new LED bulbs that are just kind of all over the place.
Oh, my gosh, there's that.
On the color range and the.
Yeah, those streetlights that are so, so cold and awful and bright and blinding.
I think it's just, it's, it seemed to come up in previous applications, sort of in relation to neighbors and the tax community of residential to commercial.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, certainly. Yeah, certainly, um, Paralyn's, because obviously, she's gonna, she wanted bollards to light the whole, you know?
Yeah. Back, and then the neighbors.
And obviously, those are pretty, those are pretty ambient, they're pretty, they're, you know, they're, they don't, but people's experience is just whatever it is, right, so that, to the extent that we can deal with it, it's always helpful, but yeah, if it's a covered porch, you know.
Yeah, um, uh, so what I'm thinking is, uh, so for, uh, Phillips Town Planning Board Review, we did have to submit a light fixture cut. Um, is that how you would like it here?
It should be a cut, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Neighbors, I don't know how close, I, I don't have a picture.
It's all very close.
Yeah, but, uh.
But this is an apartment house, you know, the, the first floor is all commercial.
Right.
It's all, uh, Capri and Kona, and, um, and then this side, there's the alleyway, and then the lusk house, which is like, it's like, townhouse is like raised.
Right, before, uh, just, uh, um, cause my sister-in-law is here, she went to the, uh, physical therapy and so on, met somebody, and then somebody lives on top of, this is Market Street in the corner, there is the, the brick building there.
Yeah, the apartment building.
And then they have the Argentinian or something there under, and this one was saying, um, she's a vegetarian, but she smells the cooking of downstairs, cooking meat all the time, and, you know, those kind of things, so neighbors may come up with any kind of complaint, you never know, you know, so, so the, the, the lounge, the bar, the whatever during the day is fine at night till how late, we don't know.
Right, we need to know the hours, yeah.
Yeah, those ki, those kind of things, people will complain.
Doesn't have hours.
I think it's in the code, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's in code, okay.
People will complain, you never know what.
But I think it's late, it's eleven.
Yeah, it's very late, I actually think it may be later than that, Willie's stay is open very late, I mean, very late, like, end of the morning, so. And they're in the business, I mean, that's, this is a business district.
Uh-huh.
Lower Main, yeah.
Lower Main is a business district, so.
Yeah, and.
Welcoming back business, I know.
I guess it's good.
Good, good.
Um, all right.
All right, very good, anything else?
Oh, I think that's it, that's the best part to do, that's all I can think of.
Great. Great, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Unless you need any help, you shoot me an email.
Thank you. All right.
Look it up.
And, uh, that's it.
That'd be great, thanks so much, you take care, have a good night.
You too, good night.
See you. Wait to see you.
Anybody, um, have anything else? No? Want you to adjourn?